...two, and I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting of the Buncombe County Planning Board to order, which is scheduled for November 7th of 2011. Well, welcome everybody for attending today, and look forward to hearing from our two speakers. Has everyone received a copy of the agenda? And do you have any changes there too?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to accept. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Has everyone received the minutes of our October 17th meeting and have any chance to review them?
Just a note, there is a typo in the title. It says agenda. I've already removed that.
Okay. Aside from that, are there any other corrections or comments regarding the minutes of October 17th?
Move to approve as amended.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Hudson. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda for the day is the discussion of lighting standards that are to, are proposed to be included into our zoning ordinance. Debbie, if I may call on you just a minute, I know you have distributed to us via email some language, a couple sets of language. I think one is a blended version of staff's recommendations along with some of the comments from Progress Energy. Is that fair?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think it's dated November 6th. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to share with us regarding that? And then from there, if you don't mind, I guess we'll introduce our speakers.
Okay.
Presenters.
Well, the main changes that we had from what you saw at the last meeting are in, on page three, section 78, 668B. We added the applicability, not just to lighting for new commercial development, but also the dusted-on pole-mounted security lights and street lighting. And section B2 says that new street lighting would comply with these standards, although leased lighting would be required to be brought into conformance in five years. Section B3 is all new pole-mounted security dusted-on lights would have to be, would have to comply with the requirements, although again, in five years, any leased, their open-bottom utility-type lights would have to comply with the new standards.
Debbie, explain leased.
The intent is those that are leased through Progress Energy, once that current lease is up, they would be required to comply with the ordinance requirements. And that was something that Shannon Tuck talked with you about at the last meeting. And it was our understanding that the board wanted to go with the same type language that Asheville was using on that. Although, we have discovered recently that some of the Progress Energy leases do go up to five, up to 10 years rather than just five. So if the board would like to keep this type language in, we would want to change it to 10 years rather than the five.
Excuse me, we're having trouble hearing.
Okay, we'll try to speak up. Then we've added on page four, under the lighting specifications, intensity, a comment that we'd heard from lots of folks, that would limit the maximum rating for LED lights to 4,300 degrees Kelvin. That would eliminate the brighter blue shaded LED lights that tend to present a lot of Section E3, accent and facade lighting, we have added, we kept the requirement that lighting fixtures be directed downward rather than upward, but did add a sentence that says, "The zoning administrator or board of adjustment may waive this requirement in cases where it is impractical." So that if there is a situation where the downward lighting is not practical, the zoning administrator could waive that requirement. If he did not feel comfortable doing that, then it would go on to the board of adjustment for a public hearing for that requirement to be waived. Then on page five, number five, the standards are spelled out for the pole-mounted dusted-on security lights. They'd have a maximum of 9,500 lumens and a maximum height of 25 feet. Full cutoff would be required unless they are no more than 1,250 lumens and no higher than 12 feet. And then number six specifies, sets out the street lighting requirements. It would require that those be staggered on alternating sides of the street, that for residential streetlights, there'd be a maximum of 9,500 lumens. And for commercial, there'd be a maximum of 50,000 lumens. And then the type would be full cutoff unless they're no higher than 18 feet high and have appropriate glare reduction measures taken. And then page 6, four, we added that when taking lighting measurements, the light meter shall be calibrated within the previous two years. And those are main changes that we've added since the last planning board meeting.
Before we move on, does anyone have any comments or questions from the board to staff?
Tom, I would suggest that maybe we listen to our guest people and then come back and do like we've done in the past with these kinds of things, and just take one section at a time and talk about it.
Okay, that's fine by me. Sounds good. Anyone else? I think that's appropriate. That's good. Okay. I think we've got someone here today from the Sheriff's Department.
We have Lieutenant Helen Hall.
Okay. Thank you for coming, Helen. And then we've got someone from what engineering firm, Reese?
From Reese Nolan and Michael Rath, Phil Cricher.
Okay, okay. All righty. Helen, would you mind going first, please? Have you had a chance to look at any of these, the language?
This morning, yes sir.
Okay. If you would, yeah, we're, yeah, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you. I read through these this morning, and I think it's very well planned. I didn't see an issue with any of it. I do agree with the changes as far as the lumens are concerned on the bright, the lights that are extra bright. They do cause glare, and it is a problem whenever you have security issues, when you have cameras, when you have officers in the area. We've had instances where the lights that are too bright that cause the glare also cast shadows. So I like the fact that you did take those numbers down some. Other than that, I didn't see any issues whatsoever with any of this paperwork.
Okay.
I think it's very well planned out. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Does anyone have any questions?
Can you cite specific examples of types of lighting that give you problems when you're trying to do your job or you're trying to find the bad guys?
I can, yes sir. From our point of view, whenever we go out and we do a security survey, which we do all over the county, we will specify that we would rather have the white light rather than the blue. However, the blue LED lights are very well, they're very good. Our biggest concern is when you have the old blue type of lights, that cast shadows. So it makes it a little harder for us to see beyond where we're at. Also, if you go out, I don't know if you've had a chance to visit the GE plant in Hendersonville, but they've got a very good display. And you can go through, and they will take you through every type of lighting, and you can do it at night, so you can see where we would have our issues as far, where we consider our issues with that light, that blue lighting. That, to me, I don't think that we've had any other issues. Certainly, we like more lighting. We don't like the glare, but we do like more lighting. And we like the white lights or the blue LED lights. Those are the best type of lighting for areas.
If you don't mind, before we met today, Rod and I were talking to Helen briefly. And much to my surprise, the Sheriff's Department's much more involved with site lighting in new construction, newly constructed buildings and this type of thing than I knew. You made a comment to us about the State Employees Credit Union, I think, asked you guys to come out and take a look in the, during the construction process. Would you please comment for everybody's benefit?
Yes, sir.
Repeat that comment.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to. Anytime that anyone, business or homeowner, has questions about their lighting, they will call us, and we'll go out and we'll talk with them, and we'll make the best recommendation. State Employees Credit Union does the same with us. Anytime that they're planning on putting State Employees Credit Union kiosk out somewhere, an ATM, they will contact us and we'll go to the site with them. And if they have two or three sites, then we'll certainly go with them and pick what we feel is the best site. And it's always been our recommendation, and they've always gone along with it, that the ATM be out in the middle of a parking lot, that it have good lighting, that it not have the shrubbery and such. But yes, we do that. We go out with them every time, or almost every time, that they have a plan to put up an ATM.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone else have any questions of Helen?
I'll just say, Tom, just any considerations that we need to know regarding video surveillance and tie-in with lighting?
Then again, I think that it's the best type of lighting. And I like the LED lighting because it does cast the best lighting without the glare. It's going to depend on where you position your camera, certainly, as to what type of lighting you'll get and what you want to put the lighting on. Does that make any sense? For instance, if you are putting security on an ATM, then you want that lighting on that ATM, and you want to have the best lighting. And I would say probably the easiest thing to do would be when you make plans, maybe we could go out with you and look at the lighting or look at the area and make recommendations then. We'll be glad to do that. Our biggest thing is if you're going to have a security camera, if the lighting is too low, then it does us no good. If the lighting is too bright, then it does us no good. We've got to have that, that good mix to where we can see what's there in front of us.
I guess I was to follow up on that then, saying, and I know you've just briefly looked at this, if you feel like, you know, what we're showing here, what they presented today would be something that would be feasible for many, as your experience, many different locations as far as video surveillance. Is that a better way to say it?
I do think so, yes. Yes, ma'am, I do. I think it's a very good plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Helen. Appreciate it. Okay, Phil, would you mind coming up and introducing yourself, please, and making some comments?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Phil Cricher. I'm with Reese Nolan and Michael Rath Consulting Engineers. And we have done lighting design throughout the state, mostly from Raleigh West all the way out to Cherokee. What I'd like to do this morning, if I could get the first slides up, please, is a slight or short PowerPoint presentation, hopefully. These are some of the things that I'd like to go through, kind of the itinerary. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. Excuse me. Just one quick thing, as I went through the lighting standards this morning, before I get into this, is under lighting standards, E4, under vehicular canopies, second line says not to exceed 40 lumens per square foot. One thing I'd like to bring out is the importance of terminology. Lumens per square foot, that's pretty low. I think they, hopefully you meant foot candles. For example, a 60-watt light bulb, incandescent light bulb, will put out 900 lumens. Okay, so we want to make sure that we get our termino, being an engineer.
So what should it be?
Foot candles.
Foot candles.
I'm assuming, and we know, all know what that does.
Oh, I get it.
That foot candles would be the appropriate terminology. But again, I'm going to go through several examples of different municipalities and what they've got in their areas. And I'm just here to show you some of the things that we as lighting designers have encountered and what we do. We're not here to define your ordinance. We have to simply go by what you tell us that we can do. Okay? All right, again, the outline, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We're going to go through what IES recommends. This is the IES handbook. And...
What does IES stand for?
IES stands for the Illuminating Engineering Society of North America.
Thank you.
And they define lighting and basically how to go through it, but a lot of it is recommended. And again, I'll go through some of this here momentarily. We'll talk about general safety, as y'all were just discussing, security and cameras, how to calculate and the measurements that are done. I'm going to look at some comparison of ordinances for you, parking lots, service stations, and at property lines for different municipalities. I've got a lighting plan example, talk about a little bit of costs, and then try to answer some of your questions. This is a basic picture of the types of lighting. Usually, these are for roadway lighting or even wall pack type lighting that you would put up on the side of the building. These do not include decorative fixtures. Most of these, as you can see, are basically shoe type, shoe box, correction, type fixtures. The top light is a full cutoff fixture. There is no light above the horizontal. And then as the lighting gets more loose, we come down with less than 2.5% coming above the horizontal, less than 5%. And then finally, there are no limits on the non-cutoff type fixtures. I'd also like to talk about just a little bit of distribution. You can have these lights, and as a lighting designer, you can specify a type of distribution usually. In other words, the light can go in a full circle, the light can go just to the sides, just forwards, and/or just having a little bit back. So as a designer, we have to look at all applications, especially when we get in close to property lines. And we'll discuss that in a little bit. I know this is kind of difficult to see, but this is a page out of the IES standard book. And I've highlighted the word recommended, okay, and underlined the word maintained. These two words, recommended, IES, will almost always go to the minimum standards that they recommend, not the maximum. Maintain foot candles, there's definition, I think I saw that in the paper a little bit earlier, that defines maintain foot candles versus initial foot candles. Initial foot candles is if the fixture is brand-new and the lamp is brand-new. So you've got to be careful. And I saw where they defined when they were going to take their measurements, and I thought that was really good. Buncombe County has decided to take their measurements when the fixture is new for initial foot candles. Maintained is after they've been burned in for quite a while, maybe they're ready to I've highlighted a couple of other areas up there, and I didn't print out a copy, and it's very difficult to see. But one of the maintained average foot candles that we're talking about up here for a parking lot is .2 foot candles. It's not a whole lot. And when they're talking about enhanced security, they recommend their minimum is going up to .5 foot candles. As we move forward, different calculation methods, different municipalities incorporate different calculation methods. This particular one is from Jackson County, where we've done a considerable amount of work. And we're talking prescriptive method, which is basically hand calculations, and a performance method. Now, with the performance method, they do like, we do at our particular firm, we use lighting software to figure out how much light actually hits the ground, either on the horizontal plane or the vertical plane, and depending on how high above the property that we want to look at. In Jackson County, they've got a little statement there, I don't know if you can read it, says, "In general, as long as what happens on the site stays on the site, then the design is within compliance." So kind of keep that in mind as we go through some of the other ordinances. What I've got here is an example of a lighting layout that I did. This particular example is at a, an apartment complex. Now, you'll notice two sets of different lighting patterns. You can see the colored lines, the ISO lines. And I've indicated the foot candle levels for each particular one. As you go out from the light, the center of the light, I've indicated the hotspot is directly under the light, and as the rays go out, the lumens decrease. And the parking lot on the left, I'm going to talk a little bit about uniformity. That particular side of the parking lot is much more uniform than the horizontal parking lot, where you can see the lighting rays get less and less and less, and then finally there are no rays, no ISO lines outside the third line. That particular side of the parking lot is not really uniform. So if you're going to put up a security camera, you might not be able to see where those particular people are at that area of the parking lot.
Could you please read what the lumens are for each color? I can't make it out.
Okay, well, actually, I've got foot candles versus lumens.
Well, I'm sorry, foot candles.
Sure. The first line, it's kind of a dark color, it's inside the green line, and that will be two foot candles. Coming out, we have, I think, .5 foot candles?
That's the green.
That would be the green, and I can't read. Then we have, I'm not sure, does that say .5 as well? Might've got a typo in there. That would probably be a .3, coming down to a .1, which is the red line to the outside. And then all the way out, I've got a zero foot candle numerical. What you would see as, if you're reviewing a plan, and if you were reviewing this plan, you're really looking at the numbers more so than the ISO lines. The numbers, now, I've got a statistic box down below, and it will give you a minimum, maximum and minimum, minimum to average, and, rather, maximum to average and average to minimum, uniformity. Those are the, how we get our uniformity. For example, a uniformity of four to one is really good in a parking lot. And your light is more evenly distributed. So when we try to design, we try to design to average to minimum rather than maximum to minimum. Because often, underneath a light, you'll get a hotspot. And underneath that hotspot, depending on your requirements for the height of the pole and the maximum wattage or lumens that this lamp will produce, we could get as high as, you know, 7.6 to 10 foot candles right below the light. And if the ordinance says your maximum allowed is 3.6 foot candles on the property, then we have to design to that. As a designer, y'all were talking about leased lighting a little bit earlier, a lot of times we have to design to leased lighting, which is one of the toughest things to do. Because we, as a designer, if you're limited to leased lighting, you're limited to what, for example, Progress Energy has to offer in fixture types and pole mounting heights. As a designer, we either have to raise the pole, increase the lamp size, or narrow the spacing, or increase the spacing, depending on what we have to do. There's a lot of variables that go into designing a site.
Can you help us understand what a foot candle does for a person, say, that's standing in the parking lot? And if I'm, if I'm on the red line, and I think you said that was .1 foot cand-
.1 foot candles, yes, sir.
Okay. Can I read a book at that point? Or can I do facial recognition? Can you give me some kind of a baseline?
According to the IES recommended minimums, you can do facial recognition at .5 foot candles.
.5. When can I?
When can you read a book?
Yeah. When can I read a book?
I would not want to try to read a book personally, this is my personal opinion, under 10 foot candles. It starts straining the eyes. That's me personally. I have weak eyes.
With this chart up here, when we're talking about foot candles, is that a measurement on the surface?
This particular measurement is on the surface in a horizontal plane.
So as we, like, if we go back to what, I think you mentioned, the 40, we had 40 lumens in a gas.
Uh, yeah.
If that was foot candles, that would be, 40 would be something that might be, say, acceptable if it's taken right at the, right underneath the light versus on the ground.
We have to take measurements where we're told we can. Generally, in a classroom setting or in most indoor applications, we measure at 30 inches. We take a reading at 30 inches. In an outdoor application, we will take a measurement at the ground level or at the hard pack level. And at a property line, you'll notice I've got the property line identified on this particular one, all those numbers read zero. And that's one of the things that we have to design to, depending on what municipality we are designing for. And that measurement at a property line, depending on the municipality, Asheville is different. Buncombe County is showing at the property line on the ground. I'm going to show you momentarily here that Jackson County takes their measurement at five feet high on the vertical plane. So if you've got a five-foot-high fence, then you're taking a vertical measurement at a normal height of a person. Again, these calculations are based on total darkness, okay? And so light contributions, if I've got a convenience store across the street, and they're contributing their light or even a streetway light, and if you send out your inspector to say, "Hey, I want you to go measure at this property line, zero foot candles," or .75 foot candles. candles," or .75 is what Buncombe County is looking at, "I want you to measure .75," well, all of a sudden, you're getting three and four foot candles. Well, they're getting contributions from across the street. Or they're getting contributions for, from somewhere else, or it's not, it's a moon night. Light is additive. So for, any, any light, when it's black dark, is a lot of light. That's all I can say. So just be careful when, when you specify how, how they're measured, when they're measured. And you've got to look at the other surrounding areas as well. Here's some parking lot comparisons. And again, I, I showed Jackson County, they do a prescriptive method and they do a performance method. They'll, we'll do computer layouts for them and I've done hand layouts for them for parking lots and things like that. Down in the town of Boone, one of their things is, and again, this is where a lot of my experience is coming, their maximum in a parking lot is 3.6 foot candles. Wow. When we have a least lighting at an apartment complex and their minimum wattage is 400 watts for a metal halide and their maximum pole height is 30 feet, makes it really, really tough to design to. The chart on the lower right is from Chatham County and the city of Asheville. Both of their charts are, are very, very similar in how they do that. You notice I've highlighted the uniformity from average to minimum versus what the town of Boone has where they have minimum to maximum. So we're really limited in the minimum to maximum range. But that's their ordinance and we have to design to it. 3.6 foot candles on the parking lot. Again, Buncombe County's had six and that's fine, we'll design to six. That's great. The higher the foot candle levels, as she was referring to, your customers, the public feels much, much safer with higher lumen levels, higher foot candle levels, sure. Again, we're going back to IES recommended levels. This is at a service station. I don't know if you can read that, but I've got it in that chart, highlighted pumps, the pump island in an area that's lighted. And it's got 10 foot candles. Okay? Again, these are minimum standards. So as you're pumping gas, you want to be able to see your gas pump, you want to be able to see the pump. I'm not addressing the security issue at this point. But 10 foot candles is what IES recommends as a minimum, means you can go higher. And I can't really, I wish these things had come out a little bit larger for us, but... Anyway, these are recommended levels for the IES at, at a service station, 10 foot candles. Service station canopy in Jackson County. Well, here we've got two different scenarios. In red in the table, they've got a prescriptive method where they're allowing .06 watts per square foot. Okay? And in yellow down there, I've got that, a canopy that's 60 by 60 would allot for, I think it's 2,160 watts total. Basically, I did a calculation with this and I went through my computer program with a canopy and found that it would take 10, 175-watt metal halide fixtures to bring you up to 10 foot candles. But that's all you're allotted in the prescriptive method over in Jackson County. But if you do the performance method in Jackson County, then you can bring it up to, and I think it's highlighted there, at 24 foot candles? It's kind of hard to read from here. But if you can show that you've got 24 foot candles on the ground, then that's fine with a computer program. Otherwise, you're limited to the prescriptive method. Chatham County, they allot for 24 foot candles under their service canopy. And the city of Asheville is very, very similar wording all the way through, except that they allot for 20 foot candles under a service canopy. The town of Boone, again, the performance method, and they're up to 30 foot candles. So that's when I said a while ago, I don't know whether the Buncombe County's, they're coming up to 40 foot candles. That was an assumption on my part versus the 40 lumens, but that's something to look at.
All right. On either one of those calculations, is one more restrictive than the other or is it a depend situation?
It depends on the allotment of watts per square foot. The prescriptive method in this particular case is much more restrictive because the maximum I could get was 10 foot candles. With metal halide lamps. Again, the light source that you're using a lot depends. High-pressure sodium, which gives out the yellow light, gives out a much higher lumen output than the white light or the metal halides do. So the perceived, the perception of the person that's in that yellow light, even though you get more lumens, more foot candles, the perception is, it's not as bright. You can't read as well under the light. Where a lot of people prefer the white light of metal halides. But the lumens per output is, is much less. So, so a lot of it has to do with perceptions. I know you guys want to look at property lines as well. And again, I, I wish these were a little bit larger, really wasn't anticipating that they would be this small. But Chatham County, if you can see that, they allot at the property line, under the prescriptive method, .5 foot candles at their property line. The city of Asheville also allot for .5, maintain foot candles. And again, that's after the burn-in of the lamp. So if you go out right when the, the lights have been installed, the city of Asheville, as I read earlier, has allotted that they would take the measurements under initial or brand-new conditions. And again, Jackson County does a few other things. One of the things that Jackson County does, I guess, this is again my assumption, is because they're mostly rural in nature, they depend a lot on the prescriptive method and setbacks. They'll look at the height of the pole and maintain that if, at a property line, if you've got a 30-foot pole, they require a three times the pole height distance from the property line. So you would almost have to be 90 feet with a 30-foot pole from the property line. There are definitions in here requiring that no fixture be aimed at a property line. There are limitations on the wattage that you could use at the property lines. So when you get into rural districts, especially mountainous terrain where you've got heights and people down below and people up above, the lights coming down, this will be really advantageous. One of the things, on the right-hand side, I've got the other-than-single-family dwellings over in Jackson County. They really limit their commercial industries, multifamily dwellings, apartment complexes. If you'll notice there, .05 foot candles measured at the property line from a commercial property. Pretty restrictive. But as I said earlier, Jackson County has it, what stays on the site, is in compliance. As long as it doesn't spill over into the other property, you're doing fine. Doesn't really matter a whole lot, so. If you can prove that with software. Again, some more information from other-than-single-family dwellings. They talk about setbacks. There's a lot of authority in the planning commissioners in that they can waive certain things, they might require shields on fixtures, full cutoffs and things like that. And again, some more of the prescriptive methods, we're talking about mounting heights of poles where they are, types of luminaires. When you get into some of these lighting ordinance, just Chatham County, Jackson County, those ordinance are 16, 19 pages long. So they go pretty far in depth. Asheville, city of Asheville is, is also pretty long and in-depth. But there's pros and cons to all of them. This particular slide shows what you, as the planning commissioners, would be looking at when a developer submitted a lighting plan. Mostly, you'll see the numbers directly under the lights. Again, you'll find the hot spots and as you go further and further out, the, the light diminishes. This particular plan, if you look kind of at the, the purple lines and the red lines, they, they pretty well, they're attached all the way through. That indicates good uniformity. So there's good uniformity through the lights and then as you get further out towards the property line, the cyan numbers are all 0, 0. So when we design this, the, we've, this is at a, I think a middle school?
I was going to ask you.
Yeah, this, this particular application is a middle school. And we were doing a gym extension, auditorium rather. So as they go out, you want to look at the property lines depending on what your ordinance will say, whether it's .75 foot candles, .5 foot candles, or .2 foot candles. We'll design to that, but we'll look at the property lines and hopefully there won't be mu- much contribution from anything else. But what you see here is what our computer has said is going to be on a moonless, dark night with no other contributions. Up in the upper right-hand corner, there's a fixture, it's got the pole mounting height, so you can see how high the pole's going to be. In the lower right-hand corner, it tells you about the luminaire, what type it is, how many watts it is, the mounting height, how many lumens it puts out. And then it gives you the average on the parking lot itself and the surrounding area in this particular case. Okay, that's about it for the slides. John had asked me in an email a couple of weeks ago to answer some questions. Most of those I have answered in this particular application. And one of the questions he asked me was, "Does the ordinance allow too much light over adjoining properties?" Well, again, that's a decision that y'all will have to make. I've shown you different foot candles levels at other municipalities, .5, .2, and depending on the use, whether it's multifamily, industrial or single-family, that's going to vary just a little bit as well in where it is. He had asked me, "Would all types of developments have a lighting plan?" Yeah, pretty much, almost all developments would of some type, any commercial, industrial application especially. Residential? If it's a multifamily residential, sure, you're going to, you're going to want that. Individual, maybe, maybe not. This is where the prescriptive method comes in. If they can prove that their mounting heights of the poles, their, their lights aren't directed at the families, I'm sure you'll get your phone calls if they are and you'll know.
What about a street lighting system?
Well, obviously, there's a right-of-way for most municipalities. Most street lighting systems in almost every application, there is a, an exception for any public right-of-way and any type of fixture that the municipality decides that they want is exempt from that type of lighting. Now, Jackson County does have a private, private road ordinance and a public road ordinance. Okay? So it's a little bit different. Under the private road, they ask that the private, or the owners, maintain the IES recommended minimums. Okay? So then you would have to go back and determine what the IES minimum is and if they are in compliance. On the public right-of-ways, they've got another standard. I don't have that right in front of me, but there's two different ones for your streetlights. Depends on the municipality. Some are very, town of Boone, their, their lighting ordinance is only two pages long. They tell you what height your poles can be, your maximum and minimum averages on your parking lot, and then you have to design to it. Now, I've, I've talked with their commissioners down there on several occasions, the, the planning review board, I've, I've had to call and say, "Hey, this is a hotspot. It's going to be more than 3.6 foot candles." Okay? Because we're limited with the least lighting. If the developer wants to utilize their own lighting and specify a decorative fixture, tell me what, what they want, I'll try to design to it. It, for a designer, it's tough. But all these plans are put before a review board and they do review them.
Phil, help us a little bit with cost, or you want to go there?
My next item. Yes, sir.
The cost associated with?
What is the cost to create and certify a lighting plan? I've got in big, bold letters right here, "It depends." And that's going to be a good answer right there. Most of the plans we've done are contracted through architects or developers. And as an engineer, we contract with them as far as the cost goes. So the cost is eventually relayed on to the customer, whoever that customer happens to be. Depends on, first of all, it depends on the contract awarded initially to do the lighting design, the size and scope of the project. Oftentimes, we will have to go back because the architect or the civil engineer or the site planner or the landscape architect has come back in and they've changed something. Now, the planning board wants to see the final prints. Well, if any of those first things change, then the lighting changes. There goes revision two or revision three to the lighting change because we have to relocate the lights where they are. So the cost, again, depending on the contract, goes up. A simple lighting plan, if we didn't have to do it but once, a convenience store or even that particular apartment complex I showed you earlier, a couple of thousand dollars would be the adder. But again, that can go up depending on the complexity of the job.
If you have, does topography affect it? And I know you're going to say it depends, but, but if it's flat as opposed to a radical relief and elevation?
It's much easier to design to if it's flat, yes. And very often, what we're looking at here, we're looking at a parking lot. Parking lots are, tend to be flat. And what we try to do is get light on the hard pack, on the surface. So you can adjust a pole height to get that light on the surface. You can adjust how far back or close to, depends, that surface. So we try to get light on the surface of the hard pack. But if an architect gives us no islands in the middle of a two-acre parking lot... But if an architect gives us no islands in the middle of a two-acre parking lot, and they said, "Parking spaces are expensive, they, they, they're $250 apiece." So if I take up two parking spaces by putting a concrete foundation for a pole, he, that architect is upset with me. But we have to maintain a certain uniformity, and we have to maintain a certain light level on the parking lot, so that's a tough call sometimes. But yeah, generally, on a flat surface, when it gets different elevations, we can model in a computer the height of the pole, if it's, if we've got, we can put it on a wall, behind a wall, just wherever we can.
What about fixtures? I don't know whether you can answer this one or not, but using a, what I'm trying to get at is, what is the differentiation between the cost of a semi-cutoff fixture versus one that doesn't have any cutoff versus one that's a full cutoff? I mean, is there, is really?
The fixture price is, is not really, it's not appreciable, no.
Okay, that answers my question, yeah.
No.
Okay.
But to do a normal plan, or to execute a normal plan, does it change the number of required fixtures based on a full cutoff versus one that's?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I mean, you're talking about additional fixtures?
Generally, yes.
And additional cost?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And decorative fixtures? For example, we recently did a design at the new Jackson County Library, which was the old courthouse. If you've been out there, it's beautiful. But we put up decorative globe-type fixtures along the walkway from Main Street, goes all the way up to the old courthouse, and they've got what appears to be globes. Now, Jackson County wants some full cutoff fixtures. Well, instead of the globes, because they shine light upwards, these particular globes had to be coated on the inside, the top half, to make them full cutoffs, which increased the cost of those fixtures considerably.
But it was effective, it, it worked, it worked as a full cutoff?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, the manufacturer worked with us to, to do what we needed to be done.
You've talked a lot about the prescription and performance methods of calculation-
Yes.
...and shown examples of others. And right now, as our draft stands, the, we don't discuss that in here.
True, that's one of the reasons I brought it up.
Okay, so am I to assume that you, it's a two-part question. Am I to assume that you would recommend that we somehow address these two methods and tie that in with our requirements? And the second part of the question is, by addressing both of these methods, does it give the property owner a little more flexibility to meet the requirements?
In my opinion, yes, it does give, it does give the property owners some more flexibility. It also allows you as a board, or whoever you deem to enforce compliance, to make sure that they've got cutoffs on their floodlights, that their lights are under the eaves and not on top of the roof shining down. It, it allows a little bit more flexibility, yeah, in my opinion. And like I said, I know Jackson County is, is very rural for the most part, and it addresses all those, those issues. But it gives the designer, it gives the planning board, it gives the enforcer some flexibility in how they handle those issues. Whether everything stays on the site, is within compliance, or if not, if it's outside that area, then they've got the performance standards to go by as well.
Can you, can you tell me kind of over all of the ordinances that you deal with? If you run into a scenario, you just said one, I've worked in Boone before, so I know what Boone's like, where you've got minimum parking lot, you know, parking space requirements, or sidewalks, or all the different things, and you run into a scenario where, based on whatever they have in the ordinance, you just, you just need an exception, is, is, you know, how is that working throughout all of these ordinances in, in your experience?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we, we did come across that, that scenario where it was physically impossible to put a light on, on a place that they wanted to put it, because of the location of the property line. And so you really have to get imaginative to some degree and work with the planning board. That's about as simple as I can put it. We called them up and said, "Hey, okay, we can put a full cutoff wall pack." In, in one case, in the Boone restaurant, they were turning it into an apartment complex. Well, lucky for us that they had stair towers, and the stair towers were 30 feet high, and we could put wall packs 30 feet high on the stair towers to illuminate the parking lot. Okay? We were lucky in that case. They had existing lights that were leased that they wanted to keep. And there was not enough light produced with their leased lights to meet their minimums and uniformity for that parking lot. So like I said, luckily, in that particular case, we were able to put some wall packs high, which distributed the light further out and was able to cover the minimums that were not covered by the leased lighting.
Let me, I guess what I'm asking is, when you run into a scenario like that, and you have to go outside of the prescribed ordinances, I mean, are the process, what are the processes that you're seeing that are in place? Are there? Are they just like too bad, and you've just got to figure it out, or?
Well, like I said, we, we really haven't, sometimes, we really haven't run across that per se, other than, like I said, it was physically impossible to do some of the stuff that we needed to do with the leased lighting. We would go back to the owner in that case and say, "Mr. Owner, or Miss Owner, with the leased lighting, we are not able to meet the town's ordinance. So we need you to purchase this type of lighting for your parking lot or for your walkway." So yeah, yeah, we would have to go back to the owner, and we have done that.
Aside from the correction that you pointed out at the beginning of your presentation about the forty-foot candle-
Yes.
-candles versus lumens.
Right.
How do you feel about the draft that we've, that you've had a chance to look at today with regard to where we are at this moment, as far as presenting this? Is this, is this something that's, well, obviously, you can design about anything, I don't know how to really word this, but is this something that's compatible with what you see out in the design community in other counties and this type of thing?
Yes, it is.
Would you have any, I don't know whether I even ought to ask you this, frankly, but other, aside from the correction again, would you have any significant changes? Would you suggest any significant changes to this, material changes, or are we on the right track?
I think you're on the right track. However, the reason some of the, I pointed out, some of the other municipalities I've worked for is I, I would like to, you guys, to take a look at, at what some of the other municipalities have done. Because I know you guys are, are looking at residential, you're looking at commercial, you're looking at urban, and you're looking at rural areas throughout Buncombe County. It, it's hard to say, you know, one size fits all. I personally, I like the Chatham County ordinance real well. Jackson County ha- has their positives. You know, City of Asheville, you know, again, City of Asheville's got a pretty good ordinance. So, you know, just kind of a mixture of all three, but, but yeah, you guys are definitely on the right track. I'm glad you're looking at it.
Okay.
But you would include such things as the calculation methods and?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And again, I go back to some of the other, even the IES handbook, when it, when it's talking about foot candles at the property line, they're measuring at fi- I think now it's five feet, five inches, or five feet, six inches rather, above the property line on a vertical plane versus looking at what are the foot candles on the property line on the horizontal plane. Because somebody's got a fence, you, you really don't want the light going across the fence. Some of these other ordinances, you know, specifically says, "Don't aim your floodlights across to your neighbor." Some of those things are pretty direct, and it might help, I don't know. I just try to design to them. One thing I would like to, to mention is the, the security information that y'all were discussing a little bit earlier. We've had to obviously put in lights where security cameras were utilized. And she was right, have somebody come out and look at your property, look at the, what kind of cameras are you using? Using infrared? Are you using the standard with, where you can adjust the amount of light in the lens? How much do you really need? So a lot of the security companies, we look at, inside schools, they're different than what you're going to find outside. So yeah, get the security company out there, get, get the, the police out there, see what kind of security that you need, and then that will determine how much light that you need.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? Greg, you got anything, or Bernie, Josh, Rod? Okay. Phil, we really appreciate it, it was very helpful.
Well, good. Thank you.
Very educational for me. Thanks again.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna have to leave.
Okay. Okay, we appreciate your attending today. We'll see you next time.
Phil, do you have any business cards you could leave on the table?
I do.
Let's go around the board and talk about this a little bit. I'll start with you, Joe, if you don't mind.
I'm on the end.
Blindside you.
I'm on the end.
Given what we got before us, and taking into account the contributions that were made to us today, what's your thoughts?
I don't know what's the best protocol, but it's, it seemed to me that we need somebody like this gentleman to be reviewing whatever we come up with. And again, I don't know how that works and what the protocol is between county and private sector and so on. I've been enlightened, whether you, Mr. Chairman, I think that it's the proper time to go back and go through this based on what we have now, or does some more work need to be done before we do that? I don't know what, quite what's the best way, but it, but I've got a lot of questions. Most of them are out of ignorance, but I, I just have a lot of questions and comments, and I would like to go through it, and I'm sure some of the other board members do, too. I think we're doing well and coming along, but there's just some things I don't quite understand and would like to know more about it.
Okay. Josh, how about you? Have you got any thoughts you'd like to share with us?
I'm with Joe, I have a few questions, too, and, and one, one concern, you know, we've heard a lot about including residential, the residential component, and, and surprisingly, I didn't think at one time that I would be, I, I don't know if I would have approved of that until now that I've been educated, I am somewhat in favor, but I just want to be careful that we're not too intrusive on property rights. We might consider some, somehow, some different standards for residential versus commercial.
Okay. Mr. Vice Chair, you got anything to add?
I'm still trying to absorb all the information that we just got. I think there was a lot of good comments that he made, and I'm not sure I understand all of them. I'm pretty good with dirt, but-
Me, too.
Light's not my thing.
Bernie and I are dirt farmers on the side, isn't that right? Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm kind of of the opinion that, you know, and I know we've got some board members that are coming off, but I'm, I don't know how, you know, we can put this out to the public yet, I don't. I just don't know if it's ready.
Greg?
I just, I think the point he made about having a, you know, prescriptive and a descriptive allowance, I think that's important. Just being in the business, it's always good to have options. That's a big deal.
Well, and that's something I didn't know anything about, and I'm a little-
I didn't either.
-confused about it a little bit, too, but it, that makes some sense to me as well.
I think that's, I think that's a big deal.
Michelle?
I pretty much think, we all kind of need to look at it again. You know, I think some numbers that we've been given, everybody needs to roll around, being able facial, facial recognition levels, reading levels, property height measurements, averages and, and minimums. I think those kind of things need to kind of be rolled around, I would say, and, and thought about a little more clearly.
Okay. How about you, Scott?
I agree, I think some of the thresholds are what, at this point, I'm just unclear about. For instance, we've got one here about outdoor display areas having illuminants of 25-foot candles when you can read at 10 or something along those lines. I wonder about, are the thresholds where they need to be, and do we need to use someone like this gentleman's farmer, some, someone who actually is going to be designing plans to say, "That's excessive, that's the very base of where you need to be," give us that kind of a threshold, because I don't think we have that. You know, I think for the canopy to be off as much as it apparently is, I, I would feel a whole lot better if we, if we took the time to at least get input with regard to those, those particular thresholds and make sure that they're where we need to be. We got to have a starting point. I mean, we're gonna have to, if we're gonna do this, we've got to have a starting point. And it, obviously, it can be changed, but at the same time, I think it needs to be a reasonable starting point and one that I think folks would, who are in the business, can maybe take a look at it and say that, you know, that's probably right in the sweet spot, or it needs to be tweaked. So that's, that's where I would be on it.
Okay. And I've heard all that, and I'm, I'm in agreement as well with about everything that was said, although I, you know, would hasten that we move forward with this, but I think it deserves a little more attention. Debbie, could we ask you, maybe between now and the next meeting, I don't know, when John, is John coming back in the next week? Okay.
Sure, when he gets back.
Well, if you get a chance, communicate with him, and could we ask you to maybe reach out to Phil or others, and let's, first of all, what Scott said, let's make sure these threshold levels or limits that we've established in this draft are reasonable and consistent, I guess, with industry standards, ISC?
IES.
IES, I'm sorry. And, and also take a look at the opportunity to, to create some language about using the prescriptive method versus the others' method of analyzing and so forth, and maybe bring this back to us at the next meeting. Is that doable, you think?
Yes, sir.
And if he's got any other suggestions?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we may be calling on you, Phil, if that's okay. That's up to staff-
I can talk to my boss, but sure.
Okay. We were talking about pro bono. I think I just wanted to kind of get-
You may have talked about it.
Thought that's what you meant. Okay. Anything else on item number four on the agenda for today? All right, I haven't heard none. It's time to open up the public comment period of our agenda. I think everybody here's been here before, it appears, and know the rules, you're limited to three minutes. Speak on anything you'd like. When you come up, if you don't mind, introduce yourself, tell us where you're from, and I'd also kind of like to know, are you from the city, within the city limits? Do you reside within city limits or outside the city limits, city limits of Asheville? So who would like to go first? I'm sure we've got some folks that want to make a comment. All right, thank you.
Hi, I saw you guys last, last time, I'm Judy Maddox, I'm chair of the local- Hi, I saw you guys last, last time. I'm Judy Maddox, I'm chair of the local Sierra Club, and I want to thank you deeply for your concern and the good work that you're doing. I just have two comments. I spoke last time, but I wanted to acknowledge that I am one of those neighbors where the floodlights are pointed straight at the neighbor, me. And I would like to, to request that you all consider the dusted-dawn provisions, well, to let you know, I'm not inside the city, I am in the county limits, I'm up towards Lester, to look at dusted-dawn, not limiting them to poles or leases, but, but all dusted-dawn, to look at them in terms of their escape into the air, escape into neighbors' eyes, that they can be shielded, if you would look at that pretty closely. I would also like to just put in my, my vote for the Asheville vehicle canopy regulation of the twenty-foot candles, forty-foot candles seems like it's double, and I'm very concerned about that, and I'd like you to, to look at that. But thank you once again for all of your serious and very hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next?
Again, state where you're from, I think I know where you're from, but anyway, if you don't mind for the record.
If I may, I'm going to do this, my back doesn't work very well with that thing on the, on the table. I'm Calvin Christman, live in the Broad River area, way out in the country. So, we're in a much more rural setting. First, I'd just like to congratulate your staff. I think, looking over this work that's been done, there's been an awful lot of work put into it, as the gentleman from Reese Nolan said, I think it's, it's a good, a good ordinance. I do have a few suggestions that, that I think could, could help this. On page three, the, the new language, and I agree with the, the previous speaker, the pole-mounted dusted-dawn security lights, I see that three times on page three, they're pole-mounted. It really doesn't matter whether they're mounted on the pole, or somebody's gone to Lowe's and put it on the side of their, their barn. We had a little incident with someone in our family getting in a little dispute with their neighbors, and specifically mounting something on the side of their, their barn that shined into the neighbor's room, and they were not appreciative. So, I think that, that you could take the pole-mounted out and not lose anything there, it's the dusted-dawns, forty lights that are the issue. On page four there, at the, at the bottom, the gentleman has already suggested that that should not be lumens. I think he said the IES minimum there is ten-foot candles, and you should consider ten or twenty there, as opposed to forty. So, I think that would be one beneficial change. And then finally, on page five, item five there, I guess that's E5, again, pole-mounted in a number of places, and then there's an exception with lower footage, lower height, rather, on the, on the poles and lower lumens, that would allow going to a semi-cutoff standard. If you'll remember what you heard from, from the gentleman at Reese Nolan, the standard goes from full cutoff, cutoff, to semi-cutoff. So, when you put semi-cutoff in here, you've dropped it down two levels. I would suggest that rather than putting semi-cutoff in those lower fixtures, if you, if you went to a cutoff standard, the difference in the cost between the two fixtures is minimal or nonexistent, but going to a semi-cutoff is going to allow a lot more light trespass into neighbors' off of property and so forth. So, I think it would be important to, to do that, that way instead. Other than that, I think, I think you're going in a good direction, I support what you're doing, and I look forward to seeing the next installment.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, Al, Buncombe County, resident outside of the city limits. I think it's great that you're approaching this and doing something on it. I would hope that it would, you would see fit to apply it a little more to the residential end. I realize you don't want to get into a lot of details, but if, if you at least had a general statement that residential lighting should be cutoff lighting, so many times, my neighbor has lights that are this way, there are these decorative kind of carriage-type crystal top lamps that they give, you know, full, full light in every direction with cantalabrum bulbs, and, you know, though my house is a couple hundred feet away from his house, they light up my bedroom just fine. And we have an agreement that he will not leave those lights on during the night. But if you had a, just a, a general statement that residential lighting shall be designed to be cut off, I think that it would be a, a big benefit and solve a lot of problems, along with your restrictions with regard to the, the pole or side of house, wherever you mount one of those dusted-dawn lights. I don't quite understand people who move to the country and then have to have a pole in their front yard with a, a monster light on it. I find the wording a little, a little confusing. I think I understand your intent to, that the pole-type lighting, the dusted-dawn should apply to residential. However, you say at one point that private roads, and I think it's in page three, paragraph B, it says, "Dusted-dawn security lights and public and private street lighting." Well, how about anywhere private, like in the middle of the yard? I don't think you should restrict it to private street lighting. I think any place on a residential property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al. Next. DeeDee, would you like to come up? See ya.
Two short things. One is, I hope these persons who feel obligated to leave before the meeting is over aren't going by that clock over there, because it's still on daylight savings. The other thing is, I think it's interesting that this ordinance started out as an interest, as an ordinance, now, wait, I live in rural Lidle Cove in the east side of the county, and there's been a lot of development, and like Al said, I don't get why people would move out to the country and then put up a street light in their yard. If you didn't, if you want to live in the city with a street light, live in the city. But the other thing is, I think it's interesting that this ordinance started out as regulating commercial lighting, but all the comments you've heard today are from people who have problems with residential lighting. And so, I hope you really seriously consider that because it's fairly obvious that that's one of the bigger problems than the commercial lighting is. It's much more widespread in the rural areas where people want the night to be dark. My cousins were here from New York, and he's real interested in astronomy, and he's all excited when he comes to my house because he can see the stars, and people want to see the stars in the night. And that's a real important issue to a lot of people in the county.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Bernie, I can see you want to get up.
Good morning, I'm Bernie Argier. I've spoken here before. I live in the city limits of Asheville in Haw Creek Valley. I wanted to bring up a couple points. I first commend everyone again for putting forth these lighting standards, they're certainly needed. The addition of the dusted-dawn yard lights in the latest revision dated November 6th is a good addition, but it's not clear that residential is also included there. So, you should look at that wording. If I was to read it quickly, I would say, maybe that's just commercial dusted-dawn yard lights. So, that needs to be clarified. Using the word "pole-mounted" is a bit dangerous because I have a neighbor across the street who mounted it on his garage. You can buy them at Lowe's, Home Depot, and stick them there. So, pole-mounted pretty much would force everyone to say, "Oh, I'll just move it from my pole to my barn or garage and still have the light." So, you've got to close the loophole. And lastly, if you're going to sunset them, don't use the word "leased," because the ones you buy from Lowe's aren't leased, they wouldn't get sunsetted, only the ones from Progress Energy. So, you've got to be careful about that loophole. Then, back to the vehicular canopies, yes, I agree, you should express it in foot candles, and our expert guest today said ten-foot candles is the recommended amount by the Illuminating Engineering Society. Asheville uses twice that level, which is very generous, and I think forty would be outrageous. Ingalls was held to twenty, which is twice the level. Forty is way too high. You basically can do heart surgery under forty. And then lastly, there's nothing in the ordinance now for existing lights. I'm not saying make everyone change, but when they replace that light, have them at least then conform, or will never correct all of the weird lighting and bad lighting that's been there for years. And then if they do a renovation, City of Asheville has it, most ordinances have it, that's twenty-five percent or more, some, some percentage you guys can come up with, have them then consider getting their light in accord with the new standards. So, that's, that's my points today, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward again, state your name, and where you're from.
My name is Nancy Hall. I live at thirty-four Hill Creek Drive, which I think is, it's not in the City of Asheville, it's in Buncombe County. I was very active where we used to live, speaking before county and state legislatures. And I want to commend you for the expert thoroughness of your staff that came up with these guidelines or standards. And I also want to commend you for allowing the public to participate, and for the thoroughness of your legislative process. I am very impressed, and I will be back again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else? Patty, please.
Chairman Alexander and planning board members, I am Patty Beaver with the Council of Independent Business Owners. We've had this issue on our agenda at several recent CBO issues meetings, and I wanted to express a few concerns that we have heard over and over again from our small business members regarding this proposed legislation. Number one, significant added costs. It is not the time for the county to consider any new legislation which will add unnecessary costs to doing business in Buncombe County. The potential costs are not insignificant. Right now, any added cost could ultimately mean a job for someone. Please consider the state of the economy and the fragile nature of many of the small businesses in Buncombe County as you deliberate these new rules. A convincing case has not been made to prove that these new rules are necessary for Buncombe County right now. Number two, don't penalize a business who needs to improve their facility in some way by requiring that the provisions of these new rules be met. Number three, don't include a clause in the legislation which requires that the rules be met in a few years. Businesses need predictability, not uncertainty in this economic climate. Finally, as you hear from residents who favor stronger rules, please remember that every rule that you enact has a very real cost associated with it. Thanks.
Thank you, Patty, appreciate it. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak? Okay, having hearing done, one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period of this meeting. Is there anything else? I think we've got a course of a direction for the next couple of weeks going forward. Next meeting will be two weeks from today, correct? I don't have a calendar in front of me, but that would be the twenty-first? Twenty-first, okay. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion from Mr. Hughes, and a second from Joe. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, everyone.